This is a Board of Ed meeting for September 12th, 2019. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to medical, financial, credit, our employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in executive session. I don't think it's going to be a long. So, welcome to the Hyde Park Board of Education meeting. This is September 11th, 12th I mean. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one agenda modification. We are pulling 11.2 from the agenda. Can I have a motion to modify the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Upcoming events. Wednesday on September 18th, the Hyde Park Education Foundation will be meeting here at the district office at 10 o'clock a.m. On September 19th, it's Thursday, meet the staff night at Havilland Middle School, starting at 6:30. Monday, September 23rd, has meet the staff night at all the elementary schools for grades three through five, starting at 6:30. Wednesday on September 25th, has also meet the staff night for grades K-2 to 2, all elementarys, starting at 6:30. And the next Board of Ed meeting will be on Thursday, September 26th, here at the district office, starting at 7:00. Okay, and do we have any pride?
Yeah. So in Roffar Smith, they've actually installed something called a buddy bench, which is to help the kids focus on acts of kindness. So it's found on the playground and basically if a kid is feeling like, they're feeling left out or lonely or like they need a friend, they go and sit on the bench and it's kind of like a sign for other students to see, oh, this person needs a friend, let me go over there, sit on the bench and talk to them. And also the principal, Ms. Lawson, she's visiting the classrooms and reading Be Kind by Pat Miller to the students, so it kind of adds in with the idea of just teaching kindness as we go out throughout their lives and yeah, that's, I think that's pretty cool. And then in HMS, and actually FGR as well, on September 17th, there's going to be a parent-student forum with Dr. Michael Fallin, and he's a psychologist, a performer and a poet. And so it begins at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium, and the purpose is character education, so it's kind of building on what we're teaching in the elementary schools as well and all throughout our school district. And they want the kids to know that everyone's just more than just their appearances and we shouldn't judge people based off their appearances. And so there's two assemblies in the day, just for the students, but then the later one in the evening at night is for the parents and the students. And I remember the assemblies that I went to in middle school actually left a huge impact on me. I just, I loved them so much, so I think this should be a really good one. I heard that he's very good at presenting. And then in FGR, this might seem small, but this was our first year, the students got together and organized a senior sunrise with our advisors and Mr. Party, of course. And it was actually a pretty big turnout, and it was really exciting to see everyone coming together on their last day, their first last day of high school together. And we watched the sunrise, there was games on the football field. And then what's supposed to happen is at the end of the school year, there's going to be a senior sunset, and so we watched the sun go down and there's games. So it's kind of a nice, I heard really good things about it, people really enjoyed it. So hopefully that can be continued throughout the following years.
Thank you. So any other pride?
Yeah, just quickly, I happened to be at the middle school, but it ended their flag folding ceremony on yesterday, 9/11, and Mike Serencion and Paul Moreno actually take down the flag and fold it up and hang a new flag. And the flag that they take down goes on display at Havilland Middle School for the whole year, and then goes to the, there's an award for one particular eighth grader who demonstrates, you know, a whole list of characteristics, they dedicate the flag to that student. So it was very moving because the gentleman, Paul, and Mike who folded the flag were both, had both served in the military. And I'm not sure how the soccer team did last night. When I left, they were ahead, okay, Bobby gave me the thumbs up, they won. Bobby's son made the first goal.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, great. It was a great game, I saw half of it. I also had the opportunity to go watch the golf team tee off at one of their home matches at Dinsmore and had a photo opportunity with them, and that was just great to see, get to go see the girls soccer team on Saturday, and if I can stay awake tomorrow night, maybe the home football game, not sure about that yet. The most important piece of pride is that several people got together and nominated Perry Sheldon, our board member for the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Award for Excellence. This was a very different endeavor in that both Dr. Hulley participated in making the recommendation because of your service on the facilities committee, and Kelly Lappin also wrote on your behalf because of your involvement in the Greater School Boards Association of Dutchess County, and then certainly us as a district contributed to your nomination. But it was an impressive nomination, so congratulations. The ceremony is actually October 17th. There's usually about 600 people in the room. Perry has to sing and dance, no, actually you just stand up and receive the award. So it was an amazing process to collaborate with our Duchess BOCES, Duchess School Boards and ourselves to nominate you, so an award well deserved, and we look forward to the ceremony.
Thank you, there.
Okay, have we anything to add for superintendent's report?
Yeah, just opening of school. Opening day for staff was a very wonderful, great kickoff to the school year. It starts with our very own jazz band, who plays a couple of numbers for us. So the best way to kick off the school year is to hear students playing exceptional music right off the bat, it's the first thing that happens. A brand-new teacher who was hired in the music department joined the jazz band and played his sax. But the star was really Jalen Twitchell, who sang the National Anthem. She plays, she played then in the jazz band on the saxophone, and it had also been notified that she made a NISM Allstate for the clarinet symphonic band. So she sings, she plays the clarinet, she plays the saxophone. Also going to the NISM Conference in Rochester is Make a Noble on the violin for the string orchestra. So we have two students going off, but what a wonderful way to start the year. Our keynote presenter was Andrew O'Grady, the CEO of Mental Health America for Dutchess County, and so he addressed the staff on helping to de-stigmatize mental health.
Anxiety, he did a lot on anxiety.
Anxiety, yeah, he was very good. So our schools, it was a very smooth opening, that's not to say that there were minor little things, and I'm sure sometimes maybe if it was happening to you, maybe it didn't feel so minor if the bus was 10 minutes late and you were worried.
Very cool.
It was a cool opening, yeah. And other than that, we all divvy up as administrators and visit every single building as the buses are coming in, and Linda and I went to the bus garage, so all the schools have been visited basically more than once by now. And we did have a lot of late registrations. There were people registering September 4th, September 5th, September 6th, September 7th. People are still registering, and it's sometimes a little bit trying because you, they can't just come in and get assigned to school, it's quite a process. If you remember when you register your children for kindergarten, there are a lot of residency papers, medical papers, it's not, you don't just-
Show up.
-show up. And especially, I think sometimes the hard thing to understand is that even though they've been in a public school, if they're changing and they're registering with us, it's the same enormous package you would do as if you were registering for the first time in kindergarten, anytime a new student comes in, so. But we are still registering people. Hopefully, hopefully we will have full enrollment numbers, we don't even really report the numbers until what we call the Basic Educational Data System, BEDS Day, which is the first week of October. So in October, we'll give you an enrollment update.
Okay, so on to next, we're going to have the Dutchess County BOCES update from Dr. Hulley.
Thank you. So, oh, that time I was here, I should have practiced with my clicker.
Side, the one's on the side.
Okay. Great.
It's magic.
Just like I've done it before, thank you. So we appreciate the opportunity for you to fit us in. I know the beginning of school is quite busy, and thank you. And I'm accompanied tonight by Rob Rubin, who represents the Wapengers District, but is a board member at BOCES. So thank you for being here and showing your support for both the project and our work at BOCES. Before I begin, this is really just an update on what's been going on at BOCES over the summer and a little bit of information about the capital project. But I always like to start these to just frame for you what our relationship looks like in terms of your students. So these are numbers from last year, because as Dr. Icheck said, we are still registering as well. But in our special and alternative schools, Hyde Park has about 45 students enrolled. Twenty-four of those, these are last year now, 24 were at our beta site, our alternative high school, and 14 in the Salt Point Center, that's our K-8 program, and seven students in district. Those are students in BOCES classrooms, but the classrooms are located in different districts, and we do that for a number of reasons. Sometimes a district has a number of kids in that program and is happy to cite it there, and then we add some other students to that, and sometimes it's just where there's space. So those are our special and alternative students. In our career and tech program, last year again, you had nine students in auto mechanics, or what we call auto tech, four students in auto body, nine students in careers in animal and plant science. You had three students in computer hardware and networking, four students in construction trades. In cosmetology, you had 13 students. Culinary arts, 11 students. Early childhood, seven students. Health occupations and nursing, and nursing assistant classes, 21 students, so a large number, but those represent different kind of programs. And security and law, you had 25 students. Small engine technology, 11 students. Trade electricity, eight students. TV video production, six students. Four students in veterinary science, and one student in welding and fabrication. So you're one of our good customers, and we hope we're good to you as well. This is just some updates on our personnel. So it is a little bit rare for us to have the depth in our employees to fill retirements with other people in the organization. Typically, we have to go outside, but we were very lucky this year. And Matt Metzger has stepped up as the business manager, replacing Sherri Wesley. He really served as her right-hand man, knows all the business officials, and so he stepped nicely into that position, has really been in with the business, with the capital project since the get-go. And that's very important, because not only is it important for us, but it, remember that he has to have all the numbers straight so that you get your aid. So it's nice not to have a lot of change in that position as we get started with this. So we're very happy to have Matt. The trick is, now Matt needs a map, right? So we'll talk about that in a second. Eileen Scholes stepped up from Special Projects Assistant in CGR, that's Communications and Grants Research. She's replacing Jen, now people leave, Jen Kellum, who was there for about five or seven years. And then Jenny Shinella had been the Director of RSC Task. RSC Task is the Regional Special Education Technical Assistance-
Support Center.
Thank you, Support Center. Support Center. And she did a very nice job and worked really in the four county area. She had actually, this vacancy came open with a director who had been there less than a year, and so she applied and got that position. And then shortly thereafter, we did not get that grant continued. So we were kind of sad about that. She had written the grant, and we were expecting to go forward. Well, about two weeks ago, we heard that the people who got the grant could not do the grant. So we're now back in that same kind of business. So we will be looking for real estate and hiring people back, and we hope we'll be up and running in October. But as you can imagine, if you've had a grant-funded position for 20 years, and it's like nine or 10 people, so for almost 20 years, then losing that grant was a big deal. But it was all about costs, I think, and then the school district that took it wasn't able to support it. And then, as I mentioned to you earlier, we found Matt's Matt, and his name is Michael Skerritt, and he is, was the Director of Human Resources in PNW, Putnam, Northern Westchester. And we're very happy to have him, because number one, he's from PNW, which has a great reputation, and we hope to steal lots of ideas from him to help make Dutchess County the kind of BOCES we want it to be. But also, prior to working in human resources, he was the, very involved in the finance. So it's not like he's coming from human resources to finance, it's like he went to human resources because of his background in finance, and he'll be doing some great work with us, we think. So that's, that. I always am happy to be here in the beginning of the school year, because I always want you to know how very grateful and appreciative we are that you give us your facilities for summer school. And, you know, summer school's not easy, there's always a few bumps in the road, and it's very nice to be in a place where if we need some help, we know where to come, but you are wonderful hosts, and we're very happy about that. So I just want to run through this quickly. We do a middle school career and tech exploration. We used to, I think, charge school districts to send those middle schoolers to us. We don't do that, it was losing popularity, that probably represents the 78. We cover that cost now ourselves, and that represents the 42 and the 45 in the last two summers. It's just a very short program, and they explore two or three different career areas at CTI, but it is a way to get some people interested or understanding about that option for them when they get to high school. So extended school year is the, typically a special ed program. Kids who have IEPs that say to avoid losing their content and their skills over the summer, they have on their IEP that they should go to a summer program, extended year, that's what this is. You can see that we had 170 kids last year, we had 200 this year, so the numbers are growing. We did a more involved report for the board last night, and in addition, these are not just component students, we have students from across the river who come to this, which is nice, just between you and me. When you're a non-component, you pay extra, which is good for you and good for us, because it lowers the cost as we go forward. So we have, it's become very popular, we had 28 classroom teachers we hire, teachers from around the county to teach in this program, and it works very well, as we do for regional summer school, which you host. So we hire a lot of Hyde Park teachers to work there who had worked in your summer school, but we also hire people from around the county. And the numbers have gone down a little bit, but, you know, some of that is just the general decline of enrollment across the county and the state, I believe. So we're happy with that, and we'll keep going. So as you know, better than most school districts, you cannot really come to sell the project to the voters and to school districts with a fully designed project, because you can't pay the architects until the voters say, yes, you can go forward. So we are here tonight, a little bit, to show you how the project has changed. We've been working on the design, the redesign, and changes to it since last year, since the vote, after the vote, in January, we began, and all through the summer. And I'll just say this now, so you're aware, we expect this week to send the plans up to SED, and don't hate us, but the SED turnaround now is much, much shorter. We're talking like four to six weeks. So we actually hope to be able to bid this. It probably could be ready to bid in December, we're going to wait till January, because we just think that's a better time. But just so you know, we hope to break ground in the spring, and we'll send you all your invitations and welcome you to be a part of that. So, just to give you, oh, good, well, the pointer doesn't work so well on the thing, so I'll just talk to you. So first of all, everything that you see in dark gray is new parking. So there's 205 new parking spaces, and that may not mean much to you, but at Convocation Day, when nobody can find a parking place on our campus, they were delighted. They're not all closed, but there's more of them at least. So just as, from the bottom of the screen, you enter, that's where you enter off Salt Point Turnpike. The yellow building to your left is the administrative building, and as you proceed up to the top, that yellow building to the right with those three wings is the Career and Technical Institute. The blue is the new building, and if you remember the earlier drawings, there were three legs to that blue building. What we've decided to do to manage the cost better, we think, is to make that a two-story, a two-story building, so it's always cheaper to build on top of than to have another leg come out. So that's why that is there. I'll also remind you that for campus security, you will now come into the campus the regular way, and you will drive all the way around to the back of that building. So, and you will enter as students and visitors at the back of the building, and we'll have a security vestibule there. Students from both programs will enter there, and the kids that are going to CDI will go to the left, and those that are going to the alternative high school will go to the right. I think that's everything I need to tell you about the, those are the big issues. This is the, yeah, let me go back, sorry. So the conference center is, as you come in the entrance, it's the lowest portion of that blue building, and it's, it looks like a little lobe that's hanging off the building, and that's the conference center.
Is that, is that all new construction, the conference center, no more Room 300 or whatever it was?
Right, right, and I'll show you what, 300 will become offices for the, because we're kind of flipping the building. So yes, no more 301, and-
And that's new, the blue is new construction?
All the blue is new construction. So from a point of view of a school district, it's interesting, because I don't think I've ever done new construction like this. It means they can do it all year, everything will be fenced off. It's not like what you experienced, where you have to fit everything into two months, and so we'll be doing renovations, and those will be during the summer, but the new construction, we will probably start doing a lot of, there's a lot of site work involved here, and we'll be doing much of that starting next year, with a vengeance, I should say. So this is, what you'll see as you come in the front of the building and drive up, you'll be driving up and around this, and that curved wall is the conference center. It will have, you know, we're on a pretty tight budget, and bids are not going as nicely as everybody hopes. But this, this roof here and the, at the back of the building, there's kind of a shade roof. Those will both actually be green, so they'll have plants growing out of them, that's our, right now, that's what we're doing for the environment. So here on the left is the, is the first floor of the new build. You can see there, at the bottom of your screen, the conference room, a conference center, and you can also see to the right of that, a pink or kind of a light purple-colored room. So everything that you see purple is renovation, but that particular room is one of our culinary arts classes. So what that will allow us to do will be to provide food that our students prepare for the conference center, or for banquet and things like that, but also our school cafeteria will be around the corner, and they could also provide, let's say, a lunch one night, one day a week, or something. This is just a detail, it shows that the large conference center can be divided into three smaller rooms. It seats about 270 with chairs and tables. If we take out the tables, we can probably fit close to 300, so it's not giant, but that's that. There's a big foyer in front of that, and then if you go across the hall and to the left, you'll see another smaller conference room, and that too can be divided into three. So those would be breakout rooms, and that's about 66 seats there, and so each of the small breakouts would be about 20. So not giant, but certainly will fit our needs. That's just a picture of it with the chairs, and there you have the 170 tables and chairs and 66. It's just a graphic representation, these renderings, I hasten to add, are, assuming everything goes beautifully and the bids come in as they, as we hope they will. The reality may be we're not going to have such nice this or such nice that. But you can see in this picture that the dividers are in the ceiling, and then we would just reorient the rooms in different ways.
So, Dr. Hulley, is it safe to say that if we had a, like a superintendent's conference day, that was not a county-wide one, it was unique to us, and we needed to have some conference space, we could utilize that space?
Absolutely, absolutely, and we hope everybody will, since you've paid for it.
It'll be very nice-
You don't want to forget that.
You know, air conditioning and not little chairs.
Yes, so we're very excited about it, it's, it's a trick though, because the media for this room, you know, we want it to be nice, but media's expensive, so we'll see. We're going to struggle through some of this. Going the wrong direction. So this is then the second story, and it just shows a little more of the detail. These are classrooms to your left. You see all those little tiny, little tiny offices in the upper left, and you might be saying, boy, that's a lot of offices. So I'll remind you that our alternative high school is a, is organized with students, social workers and psychologists have a group of students that they work with, and they have wraparound services. And what that means is that they, if a student has a problem over the weekend, that counselor, a social worker meets the family at the hospital, et cetera. So those offices are because there's a need for privacy, and there's a need to often see students during the day. So it's very intensive in terms of the number of staff to support the students. So it's very intensive in terms of the number of staff to support the students. Over to your right, you can see the curved canopy at the top left. That's what I was referring to earlier, is a green roof, and that'll just be to get out of the sun while you're waiting for the buses. And over to the right, in purple, is actually 301, where we used to have our conferences, and that will be turned into the offices for the Career and Tech Center. Now, let me stop here and just make sure everybody's heard this. If you want to come over and look at the big drawings instead of squinting at these, you're more than welcome to do that, and I will be happy to talk you through anything or go over the plans with you to tell you what we're thinking and why we're, why we did what we did or why we're thinking we're doing what we're doing. But I know this is hard to see, but it gives you kind of the big picture. Over to the left, however, I just want to point out, that is a gym. It's about a half-size gym in the top-left corner. And although our students in the alternative high school need a gym, we will also have some kinds of synchronistic work with the CTI students. So we have, and you have students in the Security and Law Program, and they do a lot of physical fitness, and they run around our campus. But on rainy and snowy days, they'll actually be able to take advantage of having that gym, and they'll probably be a divider, so we can separate the two programs if we need to. So we, I don't think we fully imagined how these things will be integrated, but we're doing some of that work now. This just shows a little more detail about the offices. And I'll give you a minute for questions.
Any questions?
Just, go ahead, go ahead.
Just wondering about the entrance. That's not a good intersection there on a curve, and you've got a second road right past the entrance.
You're talking about the existing?
Yes.
That has been there since we opened, yeah.
Is that going to stay in the same spot?
You know, we did do a traffic study, as were required by SEACRA, and I think it will. We really have had surprisingly few, so I've been there four years. We've really had surprisingly few incidents, and we have a lot of student drivers, as you can imagine. So at this point, there's no plan to change that.
Because it just appears that you may have significantly more student drivers coming.
Yeah, right, because we'll have all the kids that are currently driving on Route 44. It's a good point.
I think just one thing that I would bring out that wasn't mentioned, that this plan provides a lot of flexibility for how the space is used, both as the alternative high school and with its connection to the CTI, and that, you know, there's the idea that we don't know what we'll need in the future, but we believe that this space will give it to us. You know, the growth either, in either direction, more flexibility, students could travel from one side to the other, or, you know, make use of a conference center, whereas I don't know if you remember, you know, one of the, you know, the much earlier concept that we all saw was almost a detached building. This has really gone a long way, and there's been a lot of thought in the advantages of that, so.
Right. And some of that will be moving our principals along, because they're used to having individual buildings, and I think the integration is going to be exciting. We currently have a makerspace that we use at the alternative high school, but that could be so much more exciting when you have CTI attached. And I'll just remind you that many of our students that go to the alternative high school spend the afternoon over at CTI. So for those kids, instead of getting on a bus, they're just walking. And we were able to do a lot of things for savings. I'll remind you that for years, all the food was made at the Salt Point Center Kitchen and bussed over to Route 44. And you know what? It works. And so we are, although we have kitchen facilities, that is not a full, we are not building a brand-new kitchen with all the bells and whistles. We will have steam trays, and we will still bring it up from the oversized kitchen that we have in Salt Point Center. So we've tried to keep an eye on the cost, and, you know, I hope I'm not crying when I come to see you after the bid, but, you know, we all experience that, so. Any other questions? Again, thank you for having me, and have a wonderful school year.
Thank you, Dr. Hulley.
Yeah, right. What an improvement.
So next up, we have a presentation from the NYSERTA Real-Time Energy Management, RTM program, from Train, a representative.
And joining us tonight with Elliot Sheldon is Mark Quell from Train. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Let's go back to you.
I'm not a good podium speaker, so I'm going to struggle standing right here.
Okay. As long as we can hear you on the camera.
So we're going to let Mark talk for a little while. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them, if Mark can't answer them as well as Jill.
Thank you. So really appreciate the opportunity. I'm stepping in tonight for Kyle Rose, who had some personal things he had to take care of tonight, so. But let me introduce myself. Mark Quell, General Sales Leader at Train. Been with the company since 2001, so glad to be here, and thank you for all the business we've done together over the years. And it's really exciting for me to be here because I really was, I was account manager before I became the General Sales Leader, and I started calling on this account probably about five, six years ago. And I think I'm the reason we have these issues today. So, in a jokingly manner, there are no issues, but, so I have been here since day one, and I know what we're trying to do, and I hope we can move forward with this, so. So really, this is a NYSERTA program, which is an incentive program from NYSERTA. And for those of you who know NYSERTA, there are very 50 to 100 different incentive programs that NYSERTA has, and we all pay into the systems benefits charge that's on your invoice every month you get from National Grid or Central Hudson or wherever it is. And so what Train is doing is trying to take advantage of those incentive programs on behalf of the school district, and that's what this program is about. The specific incentive program is called the Real-Time Energy Management Program. And so what is it? So we've already installed a 1.1-plus million-dollar control system in a variety of the school facilities here over the past couple of years. You folks have put a tremendous amount of capital investment into the facilities, so, which is fantastic. And you're using the school management system every day, keeping the facility comfortable for students and staff and whatnot, visitors. So we want to use this program to offset some of those costs. NYSERTA, with this program, will pay 30% incentive on the installed cost, and we're going to go through the numbers at the end. So that's one part of this program. We've already qualified the school district to be able to do that. The system that went in meets the qualifications and is good with that requirement. The second requirement is really around managing and monitoring the energy usage throughout the facility, which is really what NYSERTA wants to do. They want to find a way to lower the energy usage throughout a lot of the facilities throughout New York State, so that they can lower the capacity on the grid. We all know that the infrastructure throughout the New York State grid is, and throughout the United States, quite frankly, is struggling. So that's the real purpose behind this. So in order to monitor the energy usage throughout the facility, and not just the energy uses, but really monitor the entire facility from a efficiency perspective, Train has this Building Performance Software Package that we would add on to what's existing here now on the Train Control System. This package has been proven with NYSERTA already. We actually, in order to become a RTEM certified participant, I guess is the word, we had to send this Building Performance Package to NYSERTA for them to review, and they have approved it as a viable package to be able to get the incentive money. So this package is required as part of this incentive money, okay? So some of the things this package does, talks about predictive energy reading, talking about energy usage, talking about trying to extend the equipment life and reliability. All of that data that we're collecting, that is the goal of what we're trying to do here, is on the top four or five bullets up there. That's the real purpose behind having this software installed, okay? The school districts, or excuse me, the school facilities that you see below are the buildings that currently have control systems in them that we can use to get this incentive money on behalf of the school district. So this is an example of some of the reports that come out of the Building Performance Package. They're very hard to see, obviously, in the scale, but there are custom, or there are custom reports, there are standard reports that come out of this package. And what we have to do for Train is we have to take these reports, bundle them together, and in order to get the incentive money twice a year, we have to report to NYSERTA how the school is doing and what the data tells us. So in order to get the incentive money, that happens twice a year. So we use some of these reports, and we also use some custom reports that we have to do. So as, in order to do all of this, we have to, right now, the Tracer Ensemble, which is basically just the way that you view the system remotely, so it's like, if you're looking at your computer right now and you connect to it, it's an ensemble platform is what we call it. It's basically the customers graphical user interface. Elliot uses it every day, Jill, whatnot, to change set points, schedules, all that stuff. Right now, it's sitting on your local server. So we have to move it from a local server to a hosted cloud-based server in order to be able to use the Building Performance Package, which I think is a good thing for the school district, because it gets it off your server. Quite frankly, we have this type of application on the district server and other clients, we just run into, and I'm not an IT expert, but we run into just general IT issues, glitches. The server will just crash the ensemble system for some unknown reason, and then everybody has to spend a lot of time trying to figure out, was it a Train issue, was it a server issue, was it a district issue and whatnot. So we have had some of that here, so I think it's good to move it regardless, which we can still do, but this is required to do this incentive program. So as part of the incentive program, you have to have, like I said, the service part of it has to be there. So monitoring the existing energy usage throughout the facilities has to be there. We talked about that already. You also have to have some basic preventative maintenance that has to be part of the program. So this is just displaying here what some of that basic preventative maintenance is, and what are some of the actual task items that we have to do in order to secure that incentive money in this program. And you can see them here. And they're not terribly complicated things, but they're all around making sure that the system that you spent a lot of money on is running as efficient as it possibly can, and that, that folks are trained on it, that they know how to use it, that there's not a ton of overrides in it that are causing issues. It sounds simple, but when you have a lot of folks working on this system every day, if it's not maintained in some regard, it can become quite cumbersome to get it back into a specification that's good, so. So that's just some of the task items. So the numbers, this is what everyone likes to see, I think, and the most exciting part of my job. So the school, the proposal cost is $117,000 approximately. You can see that on the top-left there where it says number one. So that's the cost for Train to do this program for one year. The incentive money that NYSERTA will give the school district, well, let me just back up one second. NYSERTA actually gives the money to Train or the qualified vendor, whoever it is that's doing this program. And there are others, not just Train, that are involved in this program, and you can go right on nyserta.gov and look up RTEM. This is, again, this is not a Train program, this is a NYSERTA incentive. But the $365,000 that the school district gets comes to Train in the form of a check. 70% of that would be within the next, you know, four to six weeks, we would get that money into our account. The other 30% of it comes when you submit the very first report that has to go to NYSERTA, which would be approximately six months from the day that we start the program. The cost, the net to the district is $247,000 after the first year of service agreement is paid for. That $247,000 is on your account at Train, can be used for other projects, can be written to the school district as a check, just to, you know, however that financially occurs, Linda, would be the catch to that. Or it can be used for subsequent years to pay for this ongoing service. If you continue with the service past year one, NYSERTA incentivizes every year up to five years. So they'll give you another 30% on the $122,000 to do the service the second year. They'll give you another 30% on the 127, and they'll give you 20% on the last fourth year and fifth year. Each year you get 20%. They lower it 10%. It is completely up to the school district if they would like to pursue it longer than one year. So, you know, obviously, I work for Train, I think it's a great program, we've done this other school districts, I'd love to see you continue to do it more than one year. But if the value wasn't there, and the school district doesn't see the value, then you say, hey, Mark, we really are done with this, we're going to do one year, and we're going to leave the money on the counter, take it in the form of a check, however you prefer. And I do, last thing I want to stress is, this program is really about partnership with the district. We have to have a two-way communication, talking about the facility usage, talking about the energy usage, how do the schools get used, how do the schedules get set up, who's overriding what. Jill would be critical in these decisions, to review these reports along with Elliot, because she's doing some of this already in terms of monitoring energy usage now and trying to figure out how to make the school district the most effective it can be. But this is to complement that. This is not to take over that kind of analysis. This is, this is a different form of analysis, and we should be able to use this as a tool, she should be able to use this as a tool, along with Elliot, to really drive more efficiency throughout the district. That's my goal, and that's how I see the vision of what this really should be. The last thing I'll say is, this takes place for any other service agreement that you would need at Train, for any kind of maintenance program on the system that we put in. We haven't done any formal service agreement with the district at all for the system that was installed, and I think we started it a year, two, three years ago already, so it's been running without a service agreement, and we've been supporting the district since then. So it's been, behind the scenes, been maintained, but we do need something to move forward, and this would cover those costs, so there would not be any additional cost for preventative There's a lot of information there, so I apologize. I tried to simplify it as best I could. Questions?
Go ahead.
So I'm just curious, why is the state giving 365 when it, in reality, it costs 117? I mean, why is, I mean, why is it, why are they giving you so much more money than it really costs?
Yeah, so again, so it goes off of the installed cost of the system. So the installed cost was roughly 1.1 million for the system that we use for this application. They are, it's 30%, it's a flat number. They, you know, NYSERTA, I've seen them do things like this in the past, where they really just want folks to find a way to be more efficient, so they, it's, they incentivize it.
But technically, right, we could keep $250,000 and buy force equipment with it.
And one thing I didn't say in this, I think this will clear up what you're, where you went with that, because I didn't, I didn't bring this up. When we signed the agreement to do the 1.1 million-dollar project, and I was the salesperson on that job, so I know it well, Elliot Garcia and I worked really close on it, this program was not available at that time. And had it been available, I would have presented the proposal as such as saying, look, the gross cost is 1.1 million, and that cost is $800,000 or whatever, you know, 750,000. So really, this incentive is there for folks to offset the installed cost. Now, you folks were in a situation where you were doing the project anyway. You didn't even know that this incentive existed. I didn't know it existed. So you really have already spent that 1.1 million dollars, and you're really getting a big benefit here of the fact that there's an incentive that, quite frankly, we were surprised that we were able to get from NYSERTA, but they did allow us to go back in time and secure it on your behalf, if that's what we decide to do. This has been preliminarily approved by NYSERTA to move forward.
And so we don't qualify for the 365 based on what we did? We have to get the additional 117 service?
Yes, because that's, the service part of it is part of getting the incentive. Yeah, you just can't, they won't incentivize you just for putting a control system in and give you 30% of it. That's correct. Good question.
So a couple of questions. So you're saying that this would cover your typical service contract on an annual basis, or for as long as we continue with it? Can you give me a ballpark number? What would a typical service contract cost the district on an annual basis?
I knew someone was going to ask me that.
It was about $30,000.
Yeah, we've come up with a number for it.
Doesn't mean-
Go ahead.
So I worked with Kyle Rose on this before. There's some basic things, like coming in, just doing checks of the equipment, that was roughly $10,000. And then there was other checks and updates that you have to do to the system, that was like another $10,000 worth of work. And then there was like a, like an $8,000 worth of, like allowance for them to come out and fix open items that are not working.
Consumables.
Consumables, parts, pieces, additional labor, that's not included in those two items, and I'm sure Mark can talk in greater detail.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I told Elliot this when we first started working together, that, you know, we really don't want to sell a controls project to any client at Train that needs a lot of intensive additional cost after it goes into any facility, especially school districts, I understand the financial constraints. So, to answer your question, the service agreement can be very, very low. It could be, you know, somebody here once every six months just to look at something for a couple of thousand dollars. It really comes down to, Perry, how often the staff here is going to be touching the system and how, you know, much involvement they have with it. And I've seen it range from folks that goes in and they don't need a lot of support, to folks that goes in and they need a lot of support. And what, the last thing I would, don't want to see happen is where you put all of this capital into this system and it just doesn't get any maintenance and no one pays attention to it, because I've seen that coming from the field in the controls business. I mean, I put these systems in back when I started with Train. It's just sunk cost goes into them because they're not maintained. And then, what happens is nobody understands how they work, there's no documentation, and folks come around for a capital project and they wind up replacing them with somebody else's system, and then the same cycle will happen 10 years later.
So, this would provide for ongoing training as well of any of our staff for the purposes of how to operate the system, better understand set points, when, you know, my experience is people will go in and make adjustments in the system and not even really, you know, fully understand all what they may be changing within the system.
Yeah, absolutely. There's operator training involved with this, absolutely. And I would encourage the staff to do as much operator training as they can, and I would say, you know, you don't want to do more than two, three, four hours at a time because it just, you know how it is, the phones ringing and there's, you know, something to do, so, and you don't retain it. It's very difficult to retain that kind of information.
So, what, Ellie, what is the difference of this from the energy program that we had paid for and used, and what does this buying the district?
The energy program that we have through Jill?
Yeah.
So, I could let Jill help me with this as well, but the basic understanding is that Train can only see the points in which they put in the building, so the unit vents in the classroom and the exhaust fans in the building. They can't see the boilers, they don't see the amount of electricity that we use, and many of the other operating systems within the building. They can only see the actual things that they put in the building themselves. With that, and I'm sure Jill can add some of that for you.
This, this program, it'll really kind of dovetail with what I do because what the energy program looks at is very data-driven, so in our database, it's all our bills, every bill we get, every utility we're using, all that consumption data is in the database, and I look at the trends of that data to find anomalies. And we can trend some of the equipment that we've put into some of the buildings, especially like Havilin where we replaced equipment, we can trend that data, we can trend some boiler data. But this, with this program, we can choose which energy measures that we want on which equipment, and Train, Train has, you know, standard energy measures that they do for the program, but it'll, we'll be able to look at equipment specifically, and I look at a lot of data. So, the equipment monitoring will complement the data monitoring. And with this program and the software that they use, all those energy measures go through tests all the time, every day, and when they exceed a parameter, they get a red flag, and it tells us, hey, we could be doing something different here, we could save money by doing this here, or just changing a set point. So, I don't have that capability on all our equipment, and it's a different kind of software. So, it really complements what I do instead of competes with the energy program, so it'll actually help the energy program.
So, the two software systems speak? Or is it a data dump?
No, it's their software that they use for their reporting. We wouldn't be using that software, but it monitors their equipment that's in the district.
Two separate systems.
One is really, actually, to simplify it, the Train system is going to control what the equipment does, and our Jill's process is actually recording the results of what it does through an energy consumption process. So, it's kind of, it, there's a little bit of a cause and effect here, that the Train, Train's going to ensure that the equipment is running as well as it possibly can based on the controls that are available.
Through the software.
Through their software, and Jill is going to record, and I mean, I'm looking at, you know, one of the, one of the other reports that were provided to us here shows, you know, potentially, energy savings. In theory, Jill would be the one that would be capturing that and showing us whether or not there's energy savings. Now, it may be very difficult to identify that it's because of the system, but, you know, we're hoping that the more that we're putting in, the greater potential we have of savings, although it's offset by air quality, the fact that we're probably moving more air through our buildings than we ever have meeting new codes, so.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, you can't really think of the two systems, I don't think the two systems are really meshing or interacting together, it's more a matter of one's going to be doing its thing and the other one's going to be, part of the recording will be to see that maybe we're, show us that we're actually saving even more money by keeping that control system working at its most efficient level.
Right, that's what the Train software does.
The Train software is going to make sure that it's working.
And Jill will continue to manage, manage the energy consumption and...
And hopefully, you would see that, the benefit of it.
Yeah, and just to caution again, if you remember when we were in Havilin, what you just said right there, when they, when we say we were putting in all these new systems, are you going to see a cost saving? And it's interesting because while the old systems are inefficient, the new system actually takes a lot more energy to run an energy-efficient system, so you may not see those results. And we were told about that when we were going to upgrade HVAC, that you may not see the type of miraculous results if you're thinking in terms of a new system is going to be more energy-efficient. It's more energy-efficient, but it's a much bigger system.
Well, and probably, the biggest thing that maybe, that you're going to see, or that you have, you see with the improvement of the equipment is indoor air quality.
Right.
You're going to see that your spaces are better ventilated.
Right.
Better circulation, staying closer to set point temperature, humidity control, those are all the things that we're gaining.
And that's a huge gain.
Right.
But it's not without energy.
Right, you may not be able to, you know, show it in a bottom line, but, you know, it's, you know, it's been proven that better indoor air quality results in students spending more time in the classroom, you know, coming to school, less illnesses through...
Absolutely, yeah. I just wanted to reiterate that because sometimes people hear, you know, an energy program and savings and efficiencies, and, you know, we just want to keep that dialogue going then.
So, just to simplify things, NYSERTA's giving us $365,000. We're going to pay Train $117,000. If we don't enter into this program, we don't get the 365 from NYSERTA. Seems like a pretty easy decision, you know? I think the bigger decision will be next year at this time.
Right.
Whether we decide to continue or not, and I think it's going to be up to the people standing up there to show us the value of what we're getting or what we'll continue to get for $122,000 next year.
So, then, does that, does that reporting system come from Train? You know, is Kyle going to come in and give the reports?
That's a great question. So, two reports a year have to be generated and produced, and they both have to be submitted to NYSERTA in order to get the incentive money for those reports. So, I envision Kyle coming here with an energy engineer or two to review the report in detail with your staff because Kyle won't have the expertise to really dig down into the report because it is fairly complex, so, so he will do that. And really, you know, when you talk about the savings in the years out, when you get to the fourth year, you notice you start going negative, right? So, what I want to do and make sure we do is capture how much savings we're actually saving to see how much we can offset the year four and five if we continue down the road because I would, you know, advise you, I wouldn't pay for something trying to save energy if it's costing you more than, than you're saving, so. So, that's something else to think about in the future.
Well, that's where we're going to be leaning on, Jill, to show us that, that we're continuing to save, and I don't know whether you can attribute the savings to it or to other factors, but it's something that we'd have to try to evaluate, yeah. I think the other thing that would be important over the next 12 months is to try to record any of the other ancillary benefits of, of having the system in place, you know, whether it be training, whether it be, you know, in some ways, this is like a constant recommissioning of sorts, making sure that equipment is running the way it should be running, so, you know, in theory, you think everything goes in and it runs perfectly forever, well, that's not the case. So, you know, I think we want to hear about those stories of, hey, you know what, tech came in, something wasn't running, or, I guess, I'm envisioning probably a lot of this is done remotely. I mean, there's some onsite, but a lot of it's remote.
Yeah, there definitely is monthly reporting remotely, more connections to the school district remotely, and we do have a dedicated person in the Latham, New York office that does that, that's all that that person does for us. But there is onsite visits as well as part of this that need to happen and need to be recorded. So, a lot of that documentation needs to go to NYSERTA to basically prove to them that we did what we signed, what the incentive intent was. There is, I do want to clarify too, there is no obligation to save a certain amount of energy for the NYSERTA incentive, it is just given, so, there is no, there is no guarantee.
Is there any cost once we decide not to continue? So, we're moving from a local server to a cloud-based system. If we decided not to continue, does it come back to a local server? Does it stay in the cloud? How does that work?
Whichever you prefer, there is an annual cost to keep it in the cloud.
Okay.
I can get that to you, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I know there is a fee for that.
All right, it'd be good to know.
It was about 3,000.
Is that what it was?
Talked about it.
3,000 a year?
Yeah.
Really?
We can get, be sure that's what it is.
The question I have is, if we decided after that year to go with a different vendor, is the data such that we could access it in a, in a format to provide to another vendor?
Yeah, you could, but quite frankly, you, it'd be very difficult for another vendor to do this because it's a Train system, and they would have to connect to our system, and they might tell you they could do that, but it'd be challenging, in my opinion, so. The word inter, integration is used quite a bit and not always what it is intended.
Yeah, open system isn't everything.
Proprietary is another word.
There's still a lot of proprietary elements to it.
There is, there is, I mean, you know, there is certain things that can integrate, but doing something this level would be difficult.
Can I just say also, I just want the board to know and to be clear that if, for some reason, the funding through NYSERTA falls through, the district is, has no obligation to pay for service that Train has already started or done through the program.
That's good to know. I mean, there was, you know, it's, yeah, well, you know, it was interesting because, you know, actually, I don't know, maybe it was a year ago, Linda and I, and Elliot, and Elliot, we were all looking at this, and the most difficult thing for us to understand is, why can't, why can't we see somebody from NYSERTA? You know, and they're like, no, we don't come. You got, you got to go through the vendor who, you know, has the equipment, but it was, it was a really hard concept for us to grasp that this is a NYSERTA program and there's zero communication from NYSERTA to the school district, and, but we got past that, right? Yeah.
I'm surprised, because I told you to do that, you know, I suggested it.
Yeah, no, and, you know, they just, nope.
Normally, pretty good, so.
Yeah.
I don't know why they wouldn't meet with you. But it is, you know, if you go on nyserta.gov, it's out there, it's, and we've, this is probably, I want to say, the sixth school district we're doing this with, and in this dollar range too, so it's not, this isn't the first one.
Is there anybody in the, like...
In this area?
Yeah.
So, Broad Albin Schools is doing it.
Okay.
Trying to think what other school districts.
That's up by...
Amsterdam.
Amsterdam, yeah.
We're not doing it with Amsterdam?
No.
Nope.
But it's Broad Albin, it's just, you go to Amsterdam and you go right over there, yeah.
Famous Amsterdam schools, yes. Well, the other closer one is Hudson.
Oh, Hudson, okay, yeah.
Yep, towards Keeler over there.
Yep, nice.
Well, there's a couple of them in this area.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark, Jill, Elliot.
Thank you, Mark, thanks for making the trip down.
Hey, anytime. Good to see you.
At this time, can I have a motion for public participation?
So moved, yeah.
Any discussion? Halls in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and state your name. Come on, Bobby.
Well, you don't want to know.
Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Onto board discussion. Uh, yes, goals. They're late. There is one announcement, Doug will be stepping off the DLT committee, and Ed Spence will be stepping onto that committee. And any subcommittee reports?
Did you get an announcement of the DLT meetings yet?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, so somehow Lucille knows that, good.
I forwarded it to them.
Oh, okay, I'll have Lucille add you.
So, committee reports?
I can report that the Dutchess County School Board Association monthly meeting is actually being held off schedule this month. The meeting is going to be next Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00 at the BOSI's administrative offices. All are welcome to attend. I say we start at 7:00 and we try to finish by 8:30, so it's not a huge commitment. And this year, our theme, we're working with the theme of sustainability, so we're going to try to make most of our presentations have some element of sustainability, so. All are welcome, just as a reminder, our meetings are typically the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 at the BOSI's administrative offices, and members, all members are welcome to come and see what's going on.
Any other committees?
Not yet.
Okay, we have to start our favorite time of the year, board goals. So, the first one will be on academics. Any input onto those goals?
So, I did, our assignment was to come prepared to discuss academics and community. So, I have to admit that I read through the five that we had from academics of last year and made me feel a little stupid, I wasn't sure that I really understood what we were asking for. There was some good wording there, but I would suggest as an exercise, we really just go through and say, what are we trying to do? You know, what are we, what are we, what are we looking for? You know, receiving, we've got semi-annual updates on progress of integrating New York State learning standards and instructional practices. That's a mouthful. I mean, what, I have to admit, I don't necessarily feel qualified to perhaps even fully understand all that you would tell me on that. So, I, you know, I was looking at, you know, perhaps some more basic things, and we get down, it talks about the status of the coherency planning initiative, and for that, something like that, I look at, you know, what's the next steps? How are we, some basic, you know, maybe some more plain English is what I would say, is, what are we doing? What's working? What's not working? What's not working? Are we finding that we're changing any direction on it? It's a progressive process, so really, what are the next steps? And have we mastered the earlier ones? And if we haven't, what are we doing? Now, maybe that's what that, maybe that's what that goal was. But I guess I tend to think of it in more simpler terms.
I think number two was we're looking at our five-year plan and asking where are we at with that since we were in third year of it.
Okay.
And we're asking where are we at?
Okay. I don't know what it means, you know, I'm not sure I fully understand what it means to say where we're at. I'd be more interested in knowing what's working, what's not working.
They weren't at that point yet.
What's that?
They weren't at that point yet to say what's working at it. I don't think we have any evidence. They were still in the planning stages, developing teacher training.
But I would hope that when we receive an update, it would include.
I would too, but I would like to, you know, my, I guess, I mean, how much words do you want to put here?
If I could help a little too, because it was a five-year plan, but, you know, you know, the first year was developing the plan, the second year was, you know, so to Jeff's point too, yeah, we're on target with the plan. And that was, you know, it always goes a little bit slower, but the first thing you had to do was roll out the plan to the greater staff. You develop a plan in a room and then it takes a while to get it to everybody.
Yeah.
And then you certainly had to do the training. So, you know, I think that receiving an update on our strategic planning, on the status of our strategic planning may, is still a very viable goal. Because, well, we're going to do that, we'll update the board anyway. And I think a couple of presentations, where are we at with the plan? And like any plan, we've actually shifted a little bit of focus. We've maintained one focus, but we're adding a layer of focus in with the equity.
I guess that's part of what I'm looking at, yeah.
And with the, you know, step-by-step process, you know, where are we in, you know, ticking off the steps to, that we outlined in the plan? So I think, I think a simple, you know, receive an update on the strategic planning process of the coherence planning initiative. I think you could make it a little simpler by saying a report on the status of, from the strategic planning committee.
What, what results are telling us that the plan is actually effective?
The plan was to get to the point, we were actually going to use the critical thinking rubrics to assess students. And where we are in the plan right now is this is the first year that the teachers will use the critical thinking rubric. They're going to use it four times this year to assess student learning, and that's every content area. And we're going to collect the data on the assessment. So we'll have a, our baseline assessment will be done this year on implementing critical thinking skills.
I guess I'm looking for more positive results that say, we did this, therefore our students are this much better. If we measure it by state tests, then we're not doing a great job.
Right. And the plan was not written, I mean, this is why you should have a report, the plan was not written in such a way that we were going to use state testing as the measure. The philosophy was that every industry standard says that the students need these skills. And we had a lot of presentations, critical thinking, communication. So while we're going to use the state curriculum, we're going to embed the critical thinking, communication, and collaboration skills so that students are learning those skills simultaneously with the curriculum. You are going to get an assessment report in October that is going to talk about the state assessments and where we are as a district, as well as our action plan for improving those results. But the strategic plan right now was written in such a way to embed the four Cs in the content area. And that was the plan that was written. So again, as far as.
Aren't you saying that we're evaluating ourselves? And I mean, where's the objectivity?
Well, you'd have to read, we'd have to give a presentation on the whole plan, and many of the members of the Board of Education sat on the strategic planning committee. So I can do an update on what exactly was in the strategic plan. It is on the website. Yeah, we're measuring our plan to implement the four Cs in the district. So it was different than other plans where we say, okay, we're going to implement the K2 phonics program. So this year, we're implementing the K2 phonics program and we're going to measure the results according to our MAPS assessments because, you know, that's the end goal. But the strategic plan was written to embed the four Cs. So I would suggest that before you say you want to set an academic goal, you should, that has to do with the strategic plan, you need to read the strategic plan. If you want to set an academic goal to improve student achievement based on the state assessments, that can be a goal. But if you want an update on the strategic coherence and the strategic plan, we can do that. But that's different than saying we're going to set a goal to improve our performance on state assessments.
So let me ask, and I'm way out of my, you know, I'm way out of my sandbox, I guess is what I would say on this, is how, if you were going to set a goal, what goal would you recommend we set to? So our concern is making sure that all the effort and all the energy, everything we're putting into this pays off. What would you recommend a goal be? That, you know, what should we be looking at or what, what is it that we should be monitoring to know that we're successful?
I think it's twofold, and I think they could be separate. I think in terms of the four Cs, I would set a goal that I, and that was part of the strategic plan. We wanted to ensure that every student had, was getting a curriculum that embedded, we started with just critical thinking skills, that was embedding critical thinking skills into the content area. And we were going to use the rubrics to assess the student progress in critical thinking. So the goal for critical thinking is we would like to see that the students' performance in critical thinking on the rubric increases over time. So this year, they're going to assess the students four times this year on different components of the critical thinking rubric. If you replicate that the second year, you want to see that students make growth in their critical thinking skills. The theory from the get-go was that if you improve the students' critical thinking skills abilities, the state test scores will naturally go up.
Right. And, you know, the four Cs and the ed leader consortium that we're a part of, the promise is not so much about test scores. And they say that, you know, that some districts experience that, some don't. Because the statewide tests are measuring some things. And what this is really about is preparing our students for life outside of school. So we're working on both, but that's not, the state tests are not the measurement of the four Cs. The measurement are the actual rubrics that measure those skills. And that's why we're part of the consortium, so now we have a way to measure the skills. You know, I think, I believe there will be carryover, but that's not what it's intended for. And they make it pretty clear for the schools that went all out and do all interdisciplinary project-based learning, that they didn't necessarily see a big increase in test scores, but what they saw is students way more engaged, students more, you know, successful, who did go to college and things like that.
But how would you then set a goal for us as the board? We put the time in for this five-year plan. Teachers are pulled out, they're meeting together, we're paying for substitutes. How do we say that we're achieving something?
We have not had, pulled teachers out for this work. This has been on training days.
The DLT meetings aren't yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. The district leadership team is different, which we've always done, but.
But that's where most of this.
Looks like we want to say something about that.
So I think there's two things. You know, again, I think we can't have this conversation unless you read the strategic plan.
Yeah.
First of all. And again, I'll reiterate, if you're a board member and you're, you know, and you're on that committee, you need to read the plan.
Yeah.
So we are on target with that plan, but it was not a plan written, and we were very transparent. It was not a plan written with a baseline of test scores and an expectation for the test scores to raise linked to the plan. If you would like, with that said, the district needs a goal to improve performance on the state assessments, hands down.
That wasn't my point. My point is a goal should be measurable. And I don't see how most of these.
Oh, well, that's different than you, right. So, but that's, right.
I'm not hung up on test score.
Okay.
I'm saying if you have a goal, there has to be a way to measure how successful you are in.
Right. So then the board needs to set a measurable goal.
Right.
And when we do our goals with our administrative team, we use SMART goals. They have to be specific, measurable, attainable.
Right.
And time-bound.
I think we've lost that skill along the way.
But I think each year, you try to write SMART goals and there's a big conversation. So I'm not writing these goals, the board writes these goals. So I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to get thrown in the middle of this, so because we've had, you've had several conversations in the past where you said, if the goal is to receive an annual update, that's specific, measurable, and time-bound. You got two updates, and at the end of the year, when you measure your goals, you say, did we get two updates?
Yeah. Good gathering, different, we got the updates.
So if you want a workshop on writing a different kind of goal, that's a different conversation. But I didn't write these goals. I mean, we sit here as a group and the board writes the goals. So if you're asking for assistance in writing a goal to improve the overall academic achievement of the district or something that we're going to measure, that's a different question.
Is that, would that be a goal for us?
Well, that was the conversation last year. How are we going to set a goal?
Our goal is to want to see an update, basically to see how you're doing against your measurable goals to improve X, Y, Z.
And then we can take action on the update.
And that's what we got.
Right. And then we can take action on the update, right? I mean, if the update is that we're, you know, we're steadily, you know, I mean, improving and everything, okay, good. So we know that things are going well. But if the update is that things are going south, well, we can take some action on that too.
But it sounds like the plan for this year is, there's a little bit of a baseline being created by the activity.
We will have.
So we see the update of how that's coming along.
That's number two.
If we see a problem with that, then we do.
Haven't touched one yet. We haven't went back to it.
So that's number two. So I say we keep number two.
And if we wanted to do a measurable goal on test scores, as to Perry's point, I certainly don't feel qualified to put.
No, not as a board, no.
That's their job.
But we are talking about academics.
Right.
I guess I would add as a goal, and maybe it's my own goal, but I think that, based on the conversation, we all need to have a better understanding of what the plan is.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, there's a couple of ways we can do it. I think that, I think that would be an ideal board workshop.
Yeah.
Because the plan itself is 36 pages long, and you need to be committed to saying, and then when you, then you don't really have to read it too closely if we workshop it, you know, you can, but you really do need to read it.
Third executive summary.
Ahead of time. And we can, we can workshop that. I think that would be an ideal board workshop. And just to help you out with the academics, because Aviv is going to report next month, and what we're working on is we are working on an action plan to improve performance on state assessments. And there will be an action plan to perform, to improve performance on state assessments. So again, that's not, it's weird because it doesn't become a board goal, but you're going to hear the action plan in October with all the data and all of that. And that's separate from the strategic plan. We had, going back six years ago, we made a conscious decision to have our strategic plan be to embed the four Cs, the skills, into the content area, which is different than state assessments. So if you read through our strategic plan and you looked at the timeline, it would say, you know, have PD align the curriculum, utilize the rubrics for assessment. And that's where we are right now, utilizing the rubrics for assessment. So that's where we are. So.
So would it be realistic time-wise? I mean, you have an action plan, you're talking about an action plan to improve the state assessments. I don't know exactly when the data comes in for everything. Is it realistic to, you know, have that presentation given to us next month, right?
It's October 10th, and all of the spring state testing is in, that'll be in there with Regents, with MAPS. So you'll have all of last year's data on October 10th.
And you'll see the action plan.
That's what I'm saying, is it a realistic goal to see if it worked to get some?
You would have to wait until October of.
That's what America.
For that same data.
So that would be, that would be more of a goal for next year, right?
I mean, you could put that you want the assessment report to include an action plan, and that would be achieved by October for this year, and then you can choose accordingly after that.
Does that make sense?
And they will be public before we have more goals conversation next year.
And receive updates on the action plan.
Right. And I would, you know, and it's up to you if you want to, you know, three out of five of these, I did presentations on last year, and some of them were all embedded in one presentation. They were pretty simple questions to answer. So I'm happy to do that. I just, I wonder if, you know, I could give you feedback along the way, because some of the things may be just embedded in one presentation and don't need to be separate goals.
Well, the, you know, the state isn't going to do anything further probably to address parents' concerns. You know, that's, that should go away.
And the next generation standards have been out for a while. I've reported on them several times. It's up to you if you want to hear it again, but, you know, again, it's up to you. But that's been two years for presentations.
Okay. I was talking to the same page. There's no. Okay, so how, you got that, Jeff?
She wrote that down.
Yeah, but I don't know if those are.
Why don't you read what you have so far, Jay?
We'll have to, we're going to have to rewrite it anyway.
I've read the report from strategic.
Seems reasonable, it's a measurable thing, I mean, we have an action plan.
Okay, that sounded pretty good. That has something to work with there. Go, say it again, Jay.
Receive a report from the strategic planning committee, critical thinking rubric, getting a baseline assessment.
Okay, we can wordsmith that a little together.
Yeah. Okay, and then.
What else do you have?
We're going to keep number two, which is receive an update on status of coherency planning initiative.
I thought that was.
That is.
I thought that was what you just.
That is what you just said, yeah.
That's what I was asking before.
Okay, good.
And then I have, in terms of the four Cs, is every student getting embedded critical thinking skills?
That's still the same. Okay, so the first one is good.
Okay.
And then it sounded like the second one, Denise, go for it, the action plan.
To receive updates, I just have to receive updates on the action plan. This is my shorthand.
Okay, so.
But, you know, but we're getting a presentation on what the action plan is, and then to receive updates on.
October. But I mean, to be, you know, I'll just give you one little piece that's going to be in it. So, you know, we adopted a phonics program, explicit direct instruction in phonics for kindergarten first and second grade. We are not going to have those results on a monthly basis to get status updates on that.
But we don't, I don't need monthly.
Well, I mean, all of the data that you're going to get in October, we're not going to have until next September, October. But I, certainly, there could be a spring update. It could have some information. If it's late enough, we would have MAPS for you, because we do have those. But, you know, just to be realistic about data.
Not so much data, just implementation of the action plan, how that's going, right?
Sure.
The results of the action plan will come for.
Will come next year.
Right, but I do want those results next year.
Yeah.
So I know that that's not getting written into this.
Like we're doing training in November on the phonics curriculum for everybody, so, you know, things like that. You would hear about that.
In support of your action plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then next year, you see the data, you're able to compare.
This supports it.
Yeah, and that sounds like of much more interest to you.
Right.
And the public.
So the goal could be to, to schedule the annual assessment report and accompanying action plan, and receive, you know, two to three updates on progress toward implementation of the plan. So those are, you know, that makes sense for a board, that you, we're gonna make, you know, you're gonna get an academic report. It's gonna come with an action plan, and you want steps along the way to say, what are you doing to implement the action plan to improve the state assessment scores? And I put the state assessment scores in there. I think it's critical that this is the work that we've been doing all summer, and that we're gonna do in the next month or so with both the district leadership team and the administrative team. I think it is critical that we put the words improvement on the New York State assessments on there, because it has to happen. We've flatlined. We're doing well with improving our graduation rate, but we're not seeing the progress on the 3-8 testing that other districts are experiencing, and even the districts that have similar demographics, similar opt-outs, similar everything. So that's why Aviva and I have been putting our heads together, and we are ready to roll, and we're gonna collaboratively put together that action plan with the administrative team, because it is no longer acceptable, the status of our, of our performance on the New York State assessments. It's just not acceptable, so.
Okay, I've got them. Well, four.
Got it.
Good. We have four.
Did you get four?
I got four.
Four?
Yeah, I got four.
No, make one, make that into one.
No, 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 no. No, one.
I love how I write my goals.
Everything she said. I like, you know, we have to improve the New York State Assessment Plan, so the.
Scores on the New York.
Scores, so the plans on how we're going to do that, that's the, oh, that's three. That's the action plan and improvement.
Receive an annual assessment report and action plan to improve the New York State testing scores, and receive two updates of the progress of the plan.
It's much better said, yes. And then, and I lied, I only have three. So then the second one was about the four Cs and the embed.
Jay got that one. She's got that one.
And then, what is number five here, basically, to keep that, about receiving a report from the high school? I like number five. I think, yeah, you know, I don't.
And that's going well, so keep it on there.
I don't think we need to change it, but I want that update. So I have, I think we've whittled down these five goals to three.
Yes.
Nice. Is there, isn't there a whole bunch of changes coming in on the graduation requirements?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. They're just put together a task force. The Board of Regents is putting together a task force on that. So there's no changes now. It's gonna take a year or two.
Oh, okay.
So I like that. I like.
And a new commissioner.
Anybody else?
And deputy commissioner, and la, 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 la. Right on that line.
Anybody else wanna add any academic goals? Because I like the three that we've got.
I think that's good.
Your goals or my goals? It's like, we got this, right, Aviva?
Yes.
You guys?
Yep, let's see it in writing, we'll go with it.
Ed?
Yeah.
Good. Good?
Yep.
Okay, and community was the next one?
Mm-hmm.
So on there was, each board member will attend one community event as their schedule permits. Can we drop as their schedule commits, or permits? We should attend one event?
I would ask, what is the purpose of this? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish?
I, I'll tell you. I've got the answer to that.
Okay.
Because I think it's important to, you know, to give what we wanna get. We want more community involvement, you know, in the school. We, I, I can say I, I'm using we. I want more, you know, communication with people with us. I wanna hear what people have to say. I also want there to just be a flow of communication with the people in the school district with us. And I think that we can't expect people to approach us about their concerns or achievements if we are not approachable and there to be, to be had. So I think it's important for us to be seen. I think it's important for people to be able to talk to us, and that's not possible here when we sit behind this table, and that's all we do. That being said, I know we're busy, so I don't think we have to drop as their schedule permits, but I think it's important for all of us to make an effort to get out there in the community.
I don't disagree with any of that.
Okay.
My question is, what are we thinking, what is a community event?
Anything that we do.
So, so let, you know, obviously, I've raised questions about this before.
Mm-hmm, I was ready for it.
And I don't think, anybody out there not know who I am? Anybody not know how to get ahold of me?
Hey, Linda.
Anybody who's got anything to say?
I'm monopolizing this, but I think a community event is anything that we have going on, anything that we have going on in the school. I would, I would change it to be a school event, because I would say, go to a concert, go to a, go to a basketball game, go to one of our, go to the middle school when they have these assemblies.
See, and I would, I would look at this a different way, in that I feel an obligation as a community member, as the whole community. I don't see that being at the high school for a concert is where the real value is. The value is, as you said, being a person who people can contact and people can communicate with, and that you have exposure, you have, you know, you are approachable. To me, that's the real goal, is that we all need to be available.
So how would you change this, Perry?
Terry will, he'll march in the Memorial Day Parade.
No, he's gonna host Coffee Talk with Perry at Dunkin' Donuts.
You come by my house anytime. I'll stop and talk to you at the end of my driveway. I mean, I do more business at the end of my driveway than anyplace else. So I just think that.
How would you like to change it?
I would just leave it the way it is, but I think be realistic that it's not a matter, it is not a matter of us showing up at a concert or showing up at an open house. It's really about us being available to our constituents, and being prepared to talk about issues, and being, you know, being knowledgeable about what's going on in the district, and be willing to be, let them come to us with, with their concerns and questions. That's really what.
I'm gonna ask you, how do you measure that?
What? No, we're not.
No, it's good. It's, it's good, but how do we measure it? How do we set a goal to measure that?
It's a difficult, yeah, I would say it's a difficult thing. I mean, it's.
I don't think you can measure it. It, you don't have to. By nature, you don't have to measure it, because it's titled community. You know, there is.
Well, no, this is measurable. This one, I will admit. This, this goal is measurable. Well, I could do show up at one community event, and I've met the goal.
All right, well, all right.
He can have a little golf swing clicker every time somebody has a conversation he related to.
Do you want, yeah, we could start keeping score if you want.
Stop it, stop it. All right, all right, all right, all right. You're just wearing it down.
But I do have to say, if I go to a football game, or if I go to some, people will always come to me and start talking about complaints and issues that they have in the district.
They do. They just flock to you. They do.
Well, they do, I mean, you know, right? I mean, they do. I mean, hey, what about this, what about this? Positive, negative, but, so it does accomplish that by getting people to talk to you, because you're out in a social setting versus this setting.
Well, I agree. This is not the setting that I'm talking about. I'm talking about just being in the community. That's really what I see, whether we're at a Chamber of Commerce event, whether we're at the parade, whether we're, you know, in the grocery store. I think it's, it's more a matter of what we really want is for people to be approachable, reachable, educated, and committed.
So you wanna keep it worded exactly as the same?
So do you want me to report back? Should we each report back when we've been communicated with by a taxpayer or a community member?
No.
No, 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 but I, you know what I think, you know what, in all honesty.
Do you get from parents and/or staff each month?
Almost none.
So do you think it's because they don't know who you are, or they don't know how?
I don't believe it.
I don't believe that either.
If anybody doesn't know who I am, I don't think me showing up at a concert is gonna make a difference.
Well, I mean, we can argue this all, we can argue this all night.
It's good, we are, I mean, people.
I'm a promoter of the school.
Especially the staff. If you show up at a, at a school for a function, the staff is the most appreciative.
No, I'd say parents do.
Really?
When I start to talk to parents, and, yeah.
Well, how about this?
Definitely had a better response.
I'll tell you what has been working, and it crosses a little bit of both worlds, just to end this, like, bickering. No, in all fairness, I think what has been really valuable is, you know, when Perry went to the Ray McNulty Evening Forum last year that we co-hosted with Red Hook and the Auditorium, and afterwards, we can talk about that, and Perry during the Pride section talks about that. When Carl visited the classrooms with the science teachers, he talks about that. When Jeff went to the Transportation Department meeting and greeted the bus drivers this year, and he says that during Pride. I think that is twofold. One, it's a public reporting of the community event you went to. So whether, whether it's, who's, who's, Jeff going to the Chamber of Commerce with me, or Carl going to the Chamber of Commerce, that's a community event. So I think it's twofold. A, going, and B, reporting demonstrates a lot. First of all, at the actual event, people see you, you're accessible. And B, by mentioning it during Pride, Doug reports on the concerts, the science fairs, the sporting events. So I think it's, I think as you go to things, maybe the commitment is, when you're in the community and you've made a showing, make sure you mention it at the microphone.
And he's gotta take a selfie when he's there.
Yes, that's okay. Tweet it.
I was gonna say, because I won't believe it.
Because we don't believe it, how we know, so.
So.
I know that's not true, Perry.
So, you know, I, it's been a lot of, you know, we're tired, but I don't wanna lose the value of what you're talking about, about being in the community, and then sharing the experience that you had when you were there at the microphone.
So, so, let's just change the wording just a little.
Well, I think that, I think that the point is that I think each board member should report on activity that they've had, or interface that they've had with the community. I think that's, I think that's what we're saying.
Right, so, are we good? Do you wanna change it? What do you wanna?
I'll look at how to word that.
Okay.
To me, it's not a matter of just attending. It's a matter of reporting. I think, I think the idea of reporting on the interface of the community is important.
Okay.
Okay.
And sharing that experience.
Really?
Attend and share experience. How's it change the one to attend?
Oh, my goodness.
Good job, guys.
All right, that's it for today on the goals, right?
What's our assignment for next week, or next month?
What category are we doing next week?
Next, the next one, we'll be doing.
Retreats, we move tonight.
Well, you wanted to.
I want to discuss board retreats at greater length.
Okay, so we'll do that next time. So we'll do board administration and administration operations, and budget and administration. So board and administrative operations, and then budget and administration. And if we get to technology, we can, but those are the two we'll work on.
Yep. Thank you.
All right.
I didn't think that was gonna be the problem.
Come on.
Every year, it's like this.
I know.
Where you been?
Next year, let's just play the tape.
Again, you're not paying attention?
Jeff, one last question on that. So do you go through, after we have these boards or these goals, or did you go through, or does somebody go through and actually check them off that they actually, you do?
I do.
Okay.
And during the year, as they present to you, they usually say, this is one of your goals.
Okay.
I do it really directly.
Well, and we always, we always do a mid-year update on goals. I don't know if we did an end of.
And if I don't see it, I ask, and they tell, well, we did that. Here it was. Here's the, here's the presentation.
We literally take your goals and put them in the agenda planner for presentations. It's, from the minute they're finalized, we sit down with Jay, and we put them in the agenda planner. It works.
Okay, let's go, that's fine. Okay, moving on. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Go to this page. Cross my page. Okay. It's different than here. Okay, new business. Can I have a motion for 11.1 special education placements?
Some moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Couldn't do it.
11.2 has been polled. 11.3, vendor train.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
They should've made it a goal.
Get that passed?
No.
Gavin, motion for 11.4, vendor, Michael Folen, presenter at Havlin Middle School.
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion?
If anybody wants to go out, it's a community event.
Yeah, he's really good.
I know.
I'm gonna resist. I'm gonna go to the date.
Other refreshments?
Maybe.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we'll have second public participation. Can I have a motion for it?
Some of. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Boyle is quiet.
Closed.
Four.
Okay, motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone.
Okay, bye.
We bickered so much, we forced her to come on.
It's getting late.
I know. I don't have a lot to say. Don't worry. I have a great, wonderful community event coming up. We are doing the Wizards game on March 12th. It's a night of a board meeting.
Night of a board?
Mine was scheduled first. I booked it back in June. I do appreciate seeing all of you out at events and being able to talk to you, but I would appreciate if we send you an email that we got it back. That's the only thing I have to say about that. But yeah, we have a great community night, March 12th. Put on your calendar. I don't know if we can do anything about changing the Netherwood board meeting. Thanks.
Anybody else like to talk to the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. So you really scheduled it on a board night?
June.
Is this an attempt to keep me off the team? Oh, all right.
I don't think there is any other matters deemed necessary by the board?
Yes, there is.
There is? Oh, you should've brought that up at board discussion.
Oh, I was waiting for this.
Oh, okay.
I'm attending the New York State School Board Association Conference again.
The convention?
The convention, I mean, the convention this year in Rochester. It's not Vegas. But I hear Rochester's like Vegas, so I'm not sure. But, so anyway, I would also like to go. I'll be attending the annual meeting, the New York State School Board Association annual meeting, and I would like to be a delegate for this, our board, again, this year at the annual meeting, to be able to vote on topics that are not, we don't have yet. I mean, I'll give you them, and I'll tell you, and we can discuss how the board wants me to represent them. But you have to decide whether or not you want me to be your delegate.
All in favor? So I move for Denise. Do I wanna move to make Denise their delegate?